You're going to be first.
Yeah, we're going to put them on first.
You might used to be on this side.
We don't want that tag.
Very hard.
Okay. Well, you got a ways to go yet. Sure. Okay, we're going to reconvene the work session. As I said before we left, we had a executive session on collective bargaining. Skip the pledge and the moment of science, we already had that earlier this evening. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Here.
Mr. Hawes?
He's probably getting a coffee.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Voe? Mr. Hawes?
Here.
And Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Ten of eleven.
Okay. Throwing down two additions, deletions from the work session.
Mr. McGinley?
I'm asking that we add Mr. Griffith's resolution to the work session. I think that was in front of everybody, so you would have that. Yes?
And I would like to delete item number five for tonight.
Okay.
Clear out the next work session.
Very good.
But I would say that if everybody could take a look at it, because you know you have it all. There are some additions. I had some suggestions from Stephen Urban that I thought were pretty good. And I do have an update from Mr. O'Neil that I'll include in the draft for the next work session. Okay?
It's not in our draft right now.
It's, well, there is an extra, like a handout, but I'll put it all together.
Okay. So take an opportunity to look at that, since you have most of the information in front of you, okay?
So we're not doing it tonight, but you have homework.
Yep.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Do you want anything that we think we should put in there, sent to you as well? Or just correct what you've drafted?
Well, you can, yeah, if you want to send it, then I'll put it in as a suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of Ms. Howe indicated and addition of Mr. Griffith's resolution.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions? Agenda is adopted. We're going to move it around a little bit, because we have the people from Lehigh Valley who have been sitting very patiently, waiting for their opportunity. So we're going to put them on first. So if they would come to the podium? If you would introduce yourselves, please. Yes.
Good evening, thanks for having us. Mark Breidenbach, MRC. Do I need to do that for the record?
You need to do it for the secretary or the clerk.
Gotcha.
She's going to have to try to figure out what it is.
M-A-R-C.
I'm glad you spelled it.
Can I buy a vowel, please?
And this is John Fletcher.
My name's John Fletcher, I'm the president of Lehigh Valley Hospital, Hazleton. Thank you very much for allowing us the time. Mark's going to go over the project.
So why are we here today? We applied last January for a RACP grant. And has, does anybody know what that is? And how, so the county has done?
We know, but I think there's some people in the audience who don't know.
Okay.
So maybe if you could take a moment and give them a overview, please?
I'm not an expert on RACP, but it's a redevelopment assistance capital program. And it's essentially state budgeted money passed through host municipalities, like the counties and the townships and the cities of Pennsylvania, to reinvest in their communities, provide economic stimulus. I think, not sure when it started. This is going to be my fifth one. What we're asking in partnering with Luzerne County is that the county be our host municipality? Because we can't, I don't, for whatever reason, we can't contract direct with the state of Pennsylvania on a grant like that. So we've gone through townships, counties, on other ones. And that's what... It doesn't cost the county, it's a pass-through. It's for a project in Hazel Township. We applied for $3 million in February. In August, we were, sent the award letter from the governor that we were earmarked in the budget for a million dollar stimulus, or a million dollar grant. The hospital has a commitment on a match, 50 percent. And I think that's about it. So what we would be doing is a resolution to have the county be our host municipality. And if John might want to say a few words?
Just a couple of words. And so, as you know, we're located, of course, in Luzerne County. We've made significant investments since our merger with Lehigh Valley Health Network. We merged in July 1 of 2014. Gentlemen who was here earlier, we thank you very much for your kind comments. We recently did a renovation of the hospital. We did all the floors and moved to all private rooms. And we doubled the size of the emergency department. It's a significant capital investment that we made in the city of Hazleton. In addition to that, we opened a wellness center in Mountaintop. We expanded our primary care base and our physician services in the area. And it's critical to us, because one of the things that we want to do with healthcare moving all to outpatient, is to continue our expansion project on the campus of the Health and Wellness Center, which is located in Hazleton. And that's what we're going to utilize these dollars for. And so it's really to continue our commitment to the city of Hazleton and to the greater Hazleton area. So we ask for your support as it relates to that. And be happy to answer any questions for you.
If I could just jump in, Mr. McGinnity, real quick?
Alright.
I want to say a couple of things about Lehigh Valley. The first is that, you know, John and I met and we brought in Lynn Hill and her team as well, from Human Services. There are a bunch of things that Lehigh Valley is doing to support the, not only the citizens of Luzerne County, but also the citizens of Skookul County, Carbon County, through Lehigh Valley that we're working on together, from our Human Services side of things. Every suggestion that we had in order to assist the citizens of Luzerne County, Lehigh Valley has accepted full, wholeheartedly. Second thing is a personal. I actually found myself in this ER about two weeks ago. One of my kids had to go to the ER for an issue. He's okay. Scared his mother quite a bit, but, and his dad. But the services were excellent. The facility was better than I've ever seen before. And I want to thank Lehigh Valley for making the capital investment into the city of Hazleton. When we see other people moving outside of Luzerne County, Lehigh Valley has decided to stay in the lower Luzerne County side of things. So I would be recommending council would approve this RACP grant and allow these funding to go through Luzerne County. There's no general fund monies involved in this case, right to, back to Lehigh Valley.
Questions for the gentleman?
On a question, first, I'd like to thank Mr. Fletcher and Lehigh Valley. A couple of years ago, there was talk of moving the hospital out of the city of Hazleton, which would have been a financial nightmare for the city of Hazleton, that they couldn't recover from. As Mr. Pedri said, I've been up there recently, the money that you've put in that building has done a tremendous job. And thank you again for keeping them jobs and healthcare in the city of Hazleton. And as a person from that area, I really appreciate the commitment that you guys have made to the Hazleton area.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith, Mr. Griffith or Ms. Sedman?
Okay. I just have a real quick question. The application was sent on August the 1st. Like your letter stated?
The award letter was from the governor.
And you had, what, six months?
There's two rounds of application.
Okay.
The first is getting earmarked. And then a formal application that follows six months from the award letter.
Right, so your award letter was August 1st?
August.
Right, and we're in almost to the deadline, which is February 1st.
Right.
Is there a reason why the county didn't get any thing before this? I mean, we're, I mean, we're going to vote on it at the next meeting, which cuts it pretty close for you folks. January 28th is going to be the deadline for you. February 1st is your deadline. Is there a reason why we didn't get this information to get it done before this?
Yeah, I can kind of answer that with merger talks or scope impacts to this project.
Okay.
That were recently announced.
Okay, so stuff wasn't sent here and we just didn't act on it, then?
No, we were, we were basically put on pause because of a potential merger with another health network.
That explains it perfectly fine, thank you very much.
Coming out of that.
I just want to make sure we don't wait until the last minute for you folks, again.
But if we go on, if council goes on this on January 28th, and I get you everything signed that night, you going to be okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Ms. Sedman?
Yeah, I just have a question. And I don't know this, because I'm not in the Hazleton area. But there's been advertisements where Integrated Physicians Network, if, somebody told me that belongs to you, Lehigh Valley.
So, so we certainly have an Integrated Physicians Network, but that's part of what we call Lehigh Valley Physician Group. That's our employed arm of providers, both physicians and APCs, nurse practitioners and physician assistants. And so that is truly an integrated system. You may be referring to Coordinated Health, right? And so we recently announced a partnership with Coordinated Health. And they have sites in Dixon City, as well as in Pittston and in Hazleton. And so in mid-December, mid to late December, we completed, we completed that acquisition or that relationship. And so they are now part of Lehigh Valley Health Network. And so that's the presence in the northern tier, as we refer to it, in Lackawanna and Luzerne County. But they also have a strong presence in the Allentown area.
Are you going to buy Commonwealth?
Anyone else for questions? Thank you gentlemen for being patient. It'll be on our January 28th agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move down to rezoning. Mr. Eddy?
Yes, sir. This rezoning is on behalf of the Houston Host Company, number one. They are looking to get a rezoning approval of the other parcel, not the one that their building is sitting on. It's the one immediately behind them. They are looking to get it rezoned from light industrial to community business, so they can sell it to a landscaping contractor who wants to set up his business on that property. And that's the reason for the rezoning.
And you've had all the hearings and?
Yes, planning commission recommended adoption unanimously back in November.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Eddy?
Did they have a public hearing on it?
Yes.
Were there any?
Nope.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, Mr. Eddy, thanks for your patience also. Number four is the resolution proven as a pending litigation. Ms. Quoc, will you want to? Yes?
Prior to the voting session, we had an executive session regarding a case, Major versus Luzerne County and the Philadelphia Department of Human Services. And we had a discussion as to the settlement, which was negotiated in front of the mediator for the Third Circuit.
Okay. Mr. Pedri, you're up.
Okay. Division reports for December of 2019, obviously, were there in front of county council for your review. It's kind of late in the evening, so I won't, I won't belabor any points here. A couple of things that I wanted to bring up, just in terms of timeline, for county council. We made a decision that we would like this county council to vote on the tax revenue claim contract, currently being held by Northeast Revenue. That was in the process of being negotiated towards the end of last year. I signed a six-month extension with Northeast Revenue in order to facilitate the next steps regarding that. There was a typo in that first agreement that I fixed, thanks to our solicitor's office. And I signed the updated contract today that will run until June of 2020, or earlier if council decides to allocate, to get rid of the Northeast Revenue during a vote. I anticipate that will go in front of county council. If not, next meeting, work session, in early February, work session. I would think we'll have everything together. And that'll give us enough time to make a decision on the tax claim operator, as well as the lease that goes along with that, as well. And with that being said, I'll have any questions this time?
I think we have a question from Mr. Swets. Are you on the ADP computation? Mr. Griffith had requested?
Do you have that with me? So, as everyone knows, at the time the budget is prepared, we're putting together the best numbers to get something together for the October 15th deadline. If anything signed beforehand, whether it's a small amount or nominal, I'll come back like the debt service with an amendment. When the book was put together for ADP, we had $130,000 on the sheet that spelled out, other contractual for budget finance. That was broken out into, currently we had 1,500 employees, which was, that's for the payroll processing part. So that's $99,000, that's 1,500 times 550, it's in the contract. We had sent out 1,800 W-2s last year, so that's 5,670. There's 59 cents to mail the W-2s, so even though you have copies electronically, everybody gets them mailed. And then some auto card items, so if you look back at the 2017, so anytime we added jurisdictions, so obviously like Wooksbury was put in right when we went with ADP. If somebody comes in from Sullivan County or Penn Lake Borough, and we didn't have that before, every time they're added to ADP, there's a charge, and that was in the initial contract. So we had put some money aside for that as well. Also, we put in up to a 5% increase, that was in the initial contract. We currently got on December 27th, a 3.9% increase. So again, after county council budgeted. When you put all that together, it's a little bit north of $125,000, and we put $130,000 in the budget. So I do understand the actual calculation based on what we use is closer to 115, but we fully anticipate using closer to 130, and that's how we calculated it. And it's no different than we do for New World or C cap, anything that, here's the issue, here's the estimate, here's our best guess in the last five years, or here's what the increase could be.
So ADP doesn't mail out the W-2s?
They do, but it's not, it's, so we paid, I think it's 59 cents per, they mail them. We don't send, budget finance does not touch them. So you get an automatic copy, you can look on your phone, on your computer. But also, just to make sure that if anybody can't get one, they're all mailed. Every single employee, current, present, past, you know, that was here during that year gets a mailed copy to them.
That's not in their contract, though?
It's, it's one of the, it's not, the two things that are in the contract are the payroll processing, the ancillary charges, and the actual, I think in the contract, it's like 52 or 5,600 for the W-2 processing. It's like 315 a W-2. But then there is a mailing charge as well.
But that's not in their contract, right?
It's, I don't think it's the amount specified. I think it's in, again, that table underneath. I don't think it specifies the amount, but it is 59 cents. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that's very helpful.
So essentially, because of the fact you have to get the budget?
We're close to when we're budgeted.
Correct.
You have to get the draft budget out in October. You have to make some assumptions.
And again?
That probably be fulfilled early in 2020.
If the county, and we don't, you know, we're just paying the whole year so we can add employees. I think if you looked, our initial contract had 1,400 employees, this one's closer to 1,500. So we don't come back to council asking for additional money, nor if we're, if we're just a little bit under, do we say? If we're way under, we'll come back and say, hey, we're way under. But basically, it's just the, putting the budget together at the time it's put together, on the information we have. And there is some room, again, if we add employees, or if any charges get added, that we have to pay. But it's no different than any of the other contracts. It's the same thing for New World, or Westlaw, or anything like that.
Mr. McGinley, if I could, while he's at the podium?
Sure.
Okay. New World Training Access, I know you spoke to you a little bit about this out in the hall.
Yep.
Could we get, I mean, obviously, I'm going to need some training on it, but I've used it before.
Mm-hmm.
So username and access for myself. I mean, I certainly want training, but I want to have that done sooner rather than later. I know you're working on that, so.
Yeah, so I'll be sending an email to share, to share with council. We sent out an email to New World, again, for not just new council members, but current, if you want the training. Believe there's an eight-hour block, they're going to give us dates of availability. There may be like an afternoon date, a morning date. Again, people work different time. Once we get dates from New World on what dates are available, it's this, you know, next Wednesday at noon, we'll forward them the sharing and coordinate. And we'll also work on a space, because again, I don't think it can be done outside. You need the phone line, you need a computer, and I think it needs to be done on the courthouse network. I'll confirm the last part, I'm pretty sure.
Hopefully that'll be done by the end of the month, I would hope.
I would think so. We sent out two weeks ago. I'm hoping that by this week, I'll have something up to, for council to pick.
And some of these questions I sent out to the manager and I didn't get answers for, so that's why I'm going to try and run them quick, because I know the late hour. But the incorrect budget online, I know that's something that Ms. Howe raised, as well as myself. The budget that's out online is a summary budget, and it's not the budget that council approved, as a detailed budget. For instance, the line item that you have on your budget for the contract for the voting machines, Dominion says it's going to come out of a certain line item. Yet that line item is not listed on that budget that's posted out online. Number, council number 50, Fund 100, Division Code 30, Department Code 4120. 5946 is the description number. That number does not exist on the line, on the budget that's out online. Because obviously, it's not a drilled-down budget to the department level. So I think, to be transparent, I think we need to have the right budget posted online, not a summary budget worksheet. So that's a concern that's posted out there, the one that they approved. I also have a question, and I sent to the manager about the budget line items for, fund for the $16 million TRAN, and the budget line item for the voting machines. According to the contract, that's supposed to come out of the 100 fund. But I don't see an expenditure listing for that in the 100 fund, and I don't see a revenue listing for that. So is that money going to come out of the 100 fund? Are you going to do a transfer, or how are you going to do that?
Yes, the money for the voting machines will come out of the 100 fund. So basically, you had borrowed money with the state match. So you'll have a state match coming in, and then you'll have expenses going out. So it'll be in the 100 fund.
So is there a fund out there now that shows that?
You're going to have unbudgeted revenue and unbudgeted expenditures that equals zero.
But is there a fund out there with the 32 million somewhere, that I'm not seeing, for the 911 project, as well as the voting machines?
Yes, there's, there's actually funds out there. So currently, when the money was, when the money was drawn down, it was all in the general fund. Then there was a fund for, I believe it's the 265 fund, there's three, like 911 funds, I'm 99% sure it's the 265 fund. That's going to have like 30 mil, the portion that's related to 911, the other portion will be in the general fund. But I can get it for you, it's not, I can give you the exact funds.
If you send it to me, that'd be helpful, thank you.
No problem.
And I think that's all I have for the department head for the budget and finance, Mr. McGinley, thank you.
Okay. Questions? Yes?
I was looking also at the Fund 100, and regarding something even such as stormwater fees themselves. Where are they at on, I don't see them in the budget at all.
They're not in there at all.
We didn't put any money in for the stormwater fees.
I understand that, but no building is exempt, correct?
Well, that's a long question.
What's that?
That's a difficult question. We're the county, we have no money budgeted for stormwater fees.
Right, but did we get charged by the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority? Did they send you a postcard or a bill?
They did.
Okay. So why wasn't that put in the budget? Because, I mean, that should be at least, you know, an AP expense that should be shown. Because if negotiations fail, where you can't negotiate that out, then we're on the hook for it.
Good point.
Right?
Correct.
Yeah, we would. We're not going to have to appoint that, you know.
Well, but it should still be transparent.
Transparency is that it's no money in the budget for this, for that bill. That's the transparency for that.
What is the bill?
But what is the bill?
180, 100, Mr. O'Neil, what's the current bill?
192.
The gross or the net?
Let's say net.
The net is about 118 with the discount.
118 with the MS4 discount.
I mean, I still think, you know, if we're looking at realistic numbers, and you want to bring a realistic budget to council, and you expect council to vote on it in the future, all those numbers need to be here at the table.
I don't, that's the reason why I didn't put that money into the budget, Mr. Urban.
But it's still an expenditure, which is an obligation, until you feel you're confident that you can have it negotiated out.
Mr. Urban, you're not hearing me. They send us a bill.
Right.
I put together the budget.
Sure.
We decide not to put that money into the budget.
Well, how are you going to pay it?
We don't know if we have to pay it.
That's the question. So are you going to pay it or not?
I think there's a question about negotiation, but also a question about, do they have the legality to be able to charge us?
Right, but at this point in time, so are you going to?
At this point, at this point in time, I don't believe the county are making any payments to Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority for the $118,000 in the 2020 budget. If they do come to that, to that decision, we'll be sitting down with council to talk about where we're going to take those fundings from, if we do come to a resolution. At this time, we do not have any such resolution.
And if you plan on litigating it, I think you should get the public involved as well.
If we plan on litigating it, we'll go in front of county council.
Okay. As far as the division reports, I do echo Walter's sentiments, Mr. Griffith's sentiments regarding New World access. I was here on the initial council, I'd like to have access. I know the first time I was on council, I had VPN access into the system. Training obviously can come later, but, you know, I think, you know, we're already sworn in, and you guys should be prepared on day one to give us that access. I mean, you knew we were coming in two months in advance.
You can address your comments to me, Mr. Urban, not to the division head, sir.
Right.
Under the terms of the charter.
Okay. Well, I'm asking you to get us that access set up immediately. You know, in hopes that we can dig into our job, to do our fiscal.
Yeah, no, I thought this was already done, I thought it was already done, you'll be, you have access, sir.
It hasn't been done, okay. As far as the IT update regarding the IT department, I'm going to be asking you every two weeks for an update on the assessment database, and what percentage of that database is completed.
96%.
96?
Correct.
And please come back to council when it's 100% complete and let us know. Also, was there any other departments that experienced data loss that was unrecoverable?
No.
Okay. Positive?
As far as I know.
Okay. And you've already put the mitigation and remediation in there, as far as backups, proper backups?
Correct.
Going forward, okay. And lastly, I know, looking at solid waste, this will be something I'm going to be looking at in the future. Regarding like electronic waste and also tires, you know, do we bid out those tire contracts?
I think we do. You have to ask Mr. O'Neil, we'll get a report from Mr. Donardi on that for you.
Okay.
There is only one vendor that's in compliance, that will collect the tires in our area and the companies that we have.
Okay. I mean, I was approached by a local business that says that they have all the proper insurances, and licensing and whatnot, and he was interested.
There's stipulations, in order for us to get the grant funding for those tires, they have to be recyclable.
Okay.
And that's probably what they're not taking into consideration.
Not getting, okay.
But yeah, if you have somebody who thinks it can save us money, let us know, send it our way.
And then the other thing, like I said, electronic waste would be something, you know, I think Berks County has a solid waste, actually, authority or so. And I want to kind of take a look at their model, because they allow their residents to drop off computers anytime.
Wow. I love, listen, I think that's a phenomenal thing, I would love to work with you on that. I think that our recycling entire department of one person, Shin Beth, does a really good job. And I would love to work with you on that, because that would be an awesome opportunity for the county, for county citizens to be able to drop off recycling.
And like I stated too, when I was?
I got two or three things in my garage right now, and I think about it.
And when I was at the podium, I had, you know, an actual company out of New Jersey contact me because of, you know, where I'm employed, looking for computers, and they said if I had 25 PCs or laptops, they would pick them up for free. And I said, you know, let's talk to the county after I get in public office. And I can't do it for where I'm working, because we already use a vendor. But, you know, this would be a case where, you know, where we might be able to assist the residents, and so that garbage doesn't end up in the dumps.
I like it, send me the information, we'll get, working on that.
Okay, I'll give you that information. And then, just moving forward, I'm going to pass out this information to my colleagues. So Road Maintenance and Preservation from Pendi. And while it's fresh in my head, that $2 million was initially put aside for each county. It says initially, $2 million will be reserved for each county that has passed a resolution with a 50% local match commitment required to secure the program funding. So that $2 million itself could be used at any time, as long as you're grandfathered into the program. Because I actually spoke to Pendi today, so I want to bring that out. We've taken in already 1.1 million dollars. A million dollars was spent on roads, which does not qualify for a match. The match only qualifies for, is actually, is only good on bridges. Now, we've expended about $107,000 so far in bridges. The West Liberty and I think the East County?
County road.
County road, correct? Right. So, you know, by my estimates, that we'll probably collect about 1.7 million dollars in fiscal year 2020. You know, based, based on the numbers that I've seen so far, you know, the last six months was about 850,000.
Well, I don't think?
Well, I saw, I saw the paperwork.
Mr. O'Neil, would you please go to the podium, thank you.
A right-to-know request, so, you know, I saw the checks, the check numbers.
That is a check if you're to assume that the registrations are scattered evenly throughout the year, but they are not...
Right, well, that's an estimate, that's what I stated.
Because I'm estimating probably between 1.1 and 1.2 million, based on last year's income.
Okay.
We had that ordinance in effect 11 months of the year, and that's what we collected.
So 1.1?
Correct.
Okay. And are you applying for the reimbursement for the $107,000 that was already expended, the 50% match?
We've already been, we've already secured the $2 million match.
I understand the $2 million part, I said, for the 107 that was already spent.
Correct.
Will you be getting the match for that?
We will not.
Why not? Because that, that's 54,000.
The match, the match is made on expenditures for bridges only.
Right, and that's part of bridge...
So for the 107, we will?
That's what I'm saying, the 107,000, not the 1 million on the roads.
Oh, correct, I'm sorry, my mistake, I'm, yes.
So...
That will go towards our obligation.
Right, and I know the big project is the Hillside Road, you know.
And all that had to be pre-approved already?
I know, I understand, I spoke to the state.
Okay.
Okay, so I know where the 2 million, the 2 million is basically the finite number that they'll match, 50%, you know, so basically, we have to have 2 million in the bank in order to get that match. Now, where that money comes from, it doesn't really matter, it actually, the 2 million can come out of the general fund, it doesn't have to come out of the $5 local use fee, which I found out by the state, you know, so that could be any type of money, you know, you could write a 1.9 million dollar check, and the state will, will give you 1.9 million on bridges. It is actually federal money that, basically, going through PennDOT as a pass-through. So that money is already guaranteed to us, because we've actually put that program in place in the past.
I think we have the PennDOT representative coming to February 11th meeting.
February 11.
And he's the one that I spoke to today.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to get my facts straight, but...
So he'll be here to talk to all of public and all of council?
Yeah, I'm gonna pass this out, so the 2 million's actually on page two.
No, thank you. Oh, you gave me one already, you gave me one.
So, you know, I think there's more to this story, and you'll see that transpire in the next couple of weeks. And that's it for now.
Anyone else?
I do, I do have some things for Manager Pedry, I didn't wanna take the time. One of the questions that I asked was, we got the position budget, and I'll call it a budget, even though that's not what we're gonna call it, the position budget where it said that the salary for the director of elections was $64,500, but the council approved 60,000. So my question, and I know Mr. Pedry responded, and said that, if you'll notice, the budget does not reflect the $4,500 in the budget. So my question that I asked was, where's the 4,500 coming from, to pay the additional salary? Is there gonna be salary of people laid off, or are you gonna take it from some other line item, or...
We'll take it from somewhere within the Division of Administrative Services, and we're gonna review that in the third quarter, to make sure that we have the funding available.
So you have $4,500 in the Division somewhere that you can...
I hope so.
Okay.
If not, then we'll have to go in front of county council and ask them to take the money out of reserve, which I'm assuming will go very smooth.
Well, I like your flippant attitude, I like your flippant attitude, I really do.
It's a joke.
I think it's very important that we get accurate answers. The council approved the budget, and the council approved the budget for 60,000, and I don't think it's fair for you to give somebody more money than this council's approved.
Thanks for your suggestions about your understanding of the charter, my understanding is different.
Okay, let's, Mr. Griffith has questions.
Okay, because it's just not gonna go in a good place. Budget transfer, on December the 10th, there was a budget transfer done by the coroner for a $21,000 to small tools and minor equipment. And my question is, it says here, transfers needed to purchase additional equipment for morgue and removal equipment for new vehicle. Did the coroner buy a new vehicle that, and if he did, why are we not getting this money from the VERSA fund? That's a legitimate expense that he could transfer money?
The money's not legitimate out of the VERSA fund, I think he purchased...
For the mortgage is.
Incorrect, sir.
No, okay.
And then, and I think there, a new purchase, a new coroner vehicle was purchased by the previous coroner, 2019 or 2018, Joan?
2018, I believe, but then, probably in order of the vehicle on the 107.
The VERSA.
That's a legitimate expense to buy the vehicle?
The vehicle is, correct.
Right, but the mortgage equipment's not?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, well, you need to read the VERSA law.
I have.
Okay, well, I'll bring it in next week, or next meeting for you.
Mr. Griffith.
Okay.
I think you need to read the VERSA law.
Wait a minute, Mr. Griffith has questions, let's keep it simple, answer, and let's move on.
I appreciate that very much, thank you. Council, we asked, we asked...
I appreciate it.
I'm finished, thank you.
Your friend.
I'll bring up the rest of this stuff next week.
Okay. Anyone else? Public comment? Sir Ava?
I have one comment and a couple of questions. My comment is, on the RACP grant, I brought this up last year, about a few times, and even the year before, with respect to the Altamont Building in Hazelton, that the Industrial Development Authority applied for a RACP grant for the Altamont Building, and there was never any meeting with regards to a resolution approving and authorizing that the Industrial Development Authority would be an applicant on behalf of the county for the RACP grant, just as the gentleman from Lehigh Valley came in here before you just now, to request to be an applicant, which is a proper procedure of the RACP, you know, process. For the Altamont, that wasn't done. I know, because I applied for a state right-to-know, through a state right-to-know request, as far as the Altamont Building goes, because it was brought in front of Hazelton City Council, that there was already, the application was already approved, and there was money going to be earmarked. And I was, like, bewildered by that, and I was, like, going, well, how could that be? You know, you gotta have an applicant. So I looked at who the applicant was, and lo and behold, it's Luzerne County as the co-applicant. So I'm like, I gotta bring this in front of council, you guys. So that's what I brought up last year and the year before, and Manager Pedry said that he was going to look into it, I don't know whatever came of that, but I thought that maybe this could be another, you know, way of Manager Pedry looking into it, because the state senator who recently, I guess, had an epiphany to change his political stance, decided to withhold, or put it on freeze, the RACP funds for the Altamont. And that floored me, because under state law, you can't do that. Once the RACP funds are given, you have within that calendar year to use it, or guess what happens? That money goes back into the pot. So I don't know how this, one state senator could put a freeze on money that could be awarded to an entity, you know, through RACP. I thought that maybe the governor might be able to do that, because it's, the money is allocated in the state budget to his executive budget, that's where the RACP money comes from. So, that's something I think the manager must look into, because, you know, that money's on the hook, but my two questions are, and I'll be real quick and brief. Number one is, for the $8 million through the U-DAG money, is, if the manager found out, if, from anything from HUD, if the county could...
We can work on that.
Okay, that's my first question. Second question is, with respect to, I'm trying to think, as far as with the money from the, oh, now I forgot about it, it'll come back to me, I'll send it through an email, thanks.
I don't wanna be too obvious.
Mr. Urban, or Mr. Griffith, you didn't remind me about your stormwater, that was my fault.
That's mine.
What's the matter?
I'm reminding, I'm up.
Oh, we, we put it on the agenda, but we didn't, didn't talk about it, so...
We didn't, okay, so the resolution that I was proposing was the one that's been talked about extensively here this evening, so I think everybody has a copy of it, so I'm not gonna take a whole lot of time to make the meeting any longer than it needs to be. I'm certainly open to anybody who wants to add, add to, or give me input as to what you think should be in the resolution, it might help to alleviate this burdensome fee on the taxpayers of the county. I think it's important that we get the county office of law involved in getting this thing at least put on hold until somebody comes down with a decision as to whether it's a legitimate fee or not. I think it's unfortunate that everybody has to pay this money, in the meantime, while everybody just stands around and figures out whether it's a legitimate fee or not. I think if we could put an injunction on it to stop the process until such time as either we get the president to waive it by executive order, or somebody from the state figures out where they're gonna come up with money to do it the right way, I think that's the better way to go, rather than have people losing their homes and paying for a stormwater fee, and losing business, and all the other things that are accompanied with this excessive fee that people are getting hit with, on top of a tax increase, on top of a vehicle registration fee, on top of every other fee that we can think of that we're hitting the taxpayers with, I think it'd be a good way to stop this, at least for now, until they determine whether it's a legal fee or not. Because I, according to the unfunded mandate law, I don't think it's a legal fee, but they're getting away with it because the people have no voice. Let's use the county solicitor's office that people are paying taxes for. That's what the county solicitor's office should be doing for the people of this county, if they represent the county. So let's utilize that office, as long as we're paying taxes for the, for the solicitor's office to be here, let's use it for the taxpayers' benefit.
Ms. Sebent, do you have a...
Ms. McInley, weren't you talking about hiring a lawyer that, or there is a lawyer that has very...
Ms. Sebent, if you, we'll have him come to the podium in a minute, so, no, wait a minute, anybody else comment for Mr. Griffith?
No.
Hey, I have a couple of comments that I'm gonna do after I answer her question, is that all right?
Well, first, it's gonna be council, they're gonna have an opportunity to comment up for Mr. Griffith.
Okay.
And then you'll have your opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Walter, you and Dr. Paul Dorsey, you committed for the work that you put into that.
Thank you.
It's well-written, and we need it.
Yep, and I do, I do wanna make sure, I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Perry, because I do wanna give Dr. Frank Paul Dorsey a lot of credit for working with me.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of this information in here that he had right at his fingertips, it would've took me an awful lot of research to do. So I do appreciate his help, and thank you for helping me point that out.
I think if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think this is the single most unpopular thing that's happened in our county in many years.
I agree.
I mean, in the undercurrent, I wanna encourage all my council members to support this, to come on board and support this. If you really think about it, you know, the taxpayers, or the fee payers, whatever you wanna call it, we're really paying this multiple times, because it's on generally nonprofits, it's on your churches, it's on public buildings. So if you pay school, county, municipal, if you go to church, you pay any of these taxes, you're paying the stormwater fee again. So it, I think it's grossly unfair, and again, the new members on council are gonna find out that we keep on having these mandates roll down upon us from the federal and state level, and, you know, it's very common here, that the state likes to kick down the responsibility to us. And I do, I think this is very timely, and I applaud you, Walter, for bringing this up. I think, I wonder if the words, I mean, I know, Dave, you're talking about we're negotiating the MS4 requirements, we're not to pay anything, I just wonder if that's even, if they're willing to do that, because they know that we might have some authority here, this council works unanimously, will send a very strong message, and I think it would, it would really help out the folks across Wyoming Valley and greater Luzerne County, the Back Mountain, where this is hitting here. You look at other states, you know, Maryland was brought up before New York, they're not funding it this way, but this, again, it's coming to the local taxpayer, the local property owner, the non-local taxpayer has to pay this, and at least with the levy fee, I understand we're getting a value out of it, that that is, has protected the Wyoming Valley, we saw that in 2011. This, it doesn't even meet the mandates, where they're talking about, you know, phosphorus decline levels in phosphorus and nitrates, they're kind of storm drains. If anything, it's adding, it's adding fluidity into the river. So, it's really bizarre, and I know we've gone around about this, but I just wanna encourage everybody to come on board and support this. Thank you, Mr. Chair, anyone else?
And I think it goes to Mr. Pedry's point about the money that Mr. Urban was speaking about, why we don't budget it, is clearly we don't have the money to budget it. And I applaud Mr. Pedry for saying, look, and what we'll do is, we'll negotiate with the sewer authority to give you mapping access, or whatever we need to do to make that go away. Unfortunately, the residents of this county don't have that option, and I'm glad that we don't have to levy that fee on taxpayers, because that's just another increase in their taxes, because obviously, the money's coming from them. So I certainly applaud his ability to say, I'm not gonna put it in the budget, I'm gonna make somebody else pay for it, which should be the sewer authority, we'll barter, which is good. I think every resident should be able to do that, so, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other council person?
I will add to this, if that resolution eventually just falls on deaf ears, I mean, I would think as a council, we should take it a step further and put it in the form of an ordinance, maybe put some money aside at that point for some potential litigation in the future.
Anyone else? Mr. DeLuca would like to make a comment.
Well, I see the part of the ordinance that authorizes the office of law to seek an injunction, I note that the term was used authorized and not directed. I don't know enough about the issue right now to tell you whether or not we would have legal standing, or what the magnitude of that endeavor would be. So I certainly would like the opportunity, and I think the word authorized gives that kind of latitude to come back to council, and report back to council with whether or not there are any barriers to our ability to do that, legal barriers, which could include lack of standing. Certainly, we wouldn't just wanna jump forward into something like this and end up getting sanctioned by the court for doing it, so I just wanna make sure it's clear that the authorized part is gonna give us, the office of law, the ability to research it, come back, and be able to report as to what, what our options would be.
So you'll come back with that information?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Matha?
Okay, I'd like to address Mr. Pedry right now. You're not gonna put money in the budget, you're gonna trade funds. Well, you know what? Why do you say you're gonna trade funds?
I don't know if you're gonna trade funds.
Well, I, I'm just supposition, okay? Supposition is the word that I used, okay? So you're gonna trade funds, all right? So who's paying those people to look up that item for Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority? The taxpayers, okay? So that's one thing you're gonna get hit with. As far as businesses, and as far as the rest of the Luzerne County, they're gonna pay seven times for this rainwater fee. And if you sit down and figure it out, count it on your toes and fingers if you have to, it's not that hard. People are gonna be devastated, and to answer Mr. DeLuca's question, I spoke to an attorney, and her name is Margaret Withrup, and I don't know if you know the Fine Blant Attorney Law Firm? And she told me that we could move forward in putting an injunction against Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority, under the legal ramifications that they are illegally charging a fee for services not rendered, because people in the Back Mountain, you live in the Back Mountain, he lives in Wyoming, people that live in the Back Mountain that do not have anything to do with Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority. Like myself, I have a septic tank, and I have my own well, and I'm being sent a bill from Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority for an unfunded mandate that was put across in the Clean Water Act, and that's where the research came from Mrs. Fine, from Mrs., from that was put across in the Clean Water Act, and that's where the research came from Mrs. Fine, from Mrs., from the Fine Blant Law Firm. And this is why we strongly have to vote this in to save the people in the Wyoming Valley. Because nobody's going to be exempt from it. He's not budgeting any money for it. Why isn't he budgeting it? So if he uses traded funds, we're still paying for it by tax dollars, correct? When money comes into the county, it's tax money. I don't walk up and say, hey, Dave, here's $100,000. Give it to the, to the county. It comes through tax dollars. And the tax dollars have to be spent wisely, and they're not being spent wisely if he could sit there and say, well, we're not going to pay it. Well, if he's going to say we're not going to pay it, I am certainly not going to pay the, the stormwater fee, and I write on my bill when they send me the bill. And I could show you a picture of it, and I'm glad to show everybody. I carry that as a badge of honor. Return to sender, not applicable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And shame on anybody that doesn't vote for that.
Anyone else?
Five, I wanted to, you know, I remembered what I was going to say to finish my remarks.
Well, you're going to send us that information, Mr. Ava? No, 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 he had his time. You said, you're going to send us that information.
The $5 fee, you know, as far as what Mr. Evans said, for the transportation funds, those are not going to be renewed. The federal DOT is not going to renew the funds for the match. The state will have to come up with a new one.
Mr. Ava, thank you.
Mr. McGinn, I have one question. I asked you about Nathan Lipton. The auditor was dealing with the internal controls for the budget.
I don't think he asked me. I think that was...
I think I sent an email.
I think the question was directed to Mr. Swett's or Mr. Pedri.
Could we schedule him for our next work session?
Because I don't, we don't have that contract. We don't, we do not authorize that contract.
For Nathan Lipton?
We'll contact him for the 28th through the 11th.
Yeah, so he can come to the council and explain what, what he found in this...
We'll schedule him when we have, when we can fit him into our work session.
Okay.
Because we have administrative code already moved over there.
Understandable. Yeah, when you get a chance to do that, I'll remind you.
I think you can realize that time-wise.
Yep.
We've put our shift in this evening.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Just one other area of cleanup for us, like the council committees, when are those, or...
There'll be, I, I just got the last one or two people who replied to my email that I sent out over a week ago.
Okay.
So I'll be taking care of that, and they'll be ready. I started on it today, so I hope to have it done by the end of the week and be out at least by the early part of next week.
Okay.
Okay?
Do you have anything scheduled for ABCs by chance?
Uh, that's the one thing that we went ahead with because Mr. Perry by the, is the chair, so he's, he's made some contacts and will be announcing that.
Because there's some positions that are expired that need to be...
Well, that's why we have to move ahead because a lot of those things expired in January or, or did expire at the end of December.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Mr. Griffith, Mr. Savin, second, on favor?
Aye.
Thank you.